Okay, recording has started.
Excellent. I'm going to open the special meeting for the Bethel Planning and Zoning Commission. Mark Aitken, we'll start with the flag of allegiance.
Ken Parsons, Commissioner, here for the alternate.
Shani and Ryan, Commissioner.
Paul Shion, the Chairman, so the speaking alternate.
Bob Legard, Fisher.
Excellent, staff with us this evening.
Beth Cabana. Semi-retired and director.
Amanda Martinez, Recording Secretary.
Dave McCollum, Land use Coordinator.
Excellent. We will move into, well, actually, a quick note. I just want, I want the public to know, it was my decision to not have public input tonight. It was not any bad feelings towards this. I have four pages of notes from the public input we had this meeting back in October. And if and when the commission decides to make any changes to TOD, that will trigger another public hearing, which would have public input required. So just want to make sure everyone know that I'm not quieting everyone. We're here for the work session portion. If this was any other public hearing during work session, there's no public input anyways. You're welcome to stay, fill the dinner out if you'd like. All right, I just want to make sure everyone knows that. So that being said, I want to move into the work session with staff and the members of the Economic Development Commission to review economic information pertaining to TOD.
David will start off with his initial presentation. Just, just as a housekeeping item, did the Economic Development Commission also call their meeting to order?
We did not.
Okay, I would advise you do that at this time.
Mr. Chairman, Nicholas Beatty, Chair of the Bethel Economic Development Commission, and I will call this special meeting, joint special meeting of course. Just for introductory purposes, we do have some members of our commission along with our Economic Development Director, other members, I don't know if you want to just identify yourselves.
Yeah, Ed Tomasco.
John Francis.
Jay Streamman.
Kevin McMahon.
Okay, is that everybody on your board?
I hope that's everyone that's at least in the room.
Okay, are you ready for me, Mr. Chair?
One other housekeeping item, our work session, so I will seat Doug Cooney for Katie Grant and Eric for Spoh Brady.
Here. Here we go. All right, I'm just going to tweak a couple of things to make this a bit easier to read. Screen, okay, everybody out in cyberspace, you can see the title page, correct?
Yeah. Bethel Transit Oriented District.
I'm sorry?
Bethel Transit Oriented District. That's the title page.
Mostly facts and some opinions.
Right.
So with that being said, hello, everyone. Thank you all for giving me the opportunity to present before you this evening. This is a presentation on Bethel's Transit Oriented District with what I consider to be mostly facts with a little bit of opinion regarding. You, the commission, you all know who I am. But for the general public that's here this evening, we have a lot of new faces that hasn't already seen me or heard me for that matter. My name is Dave McCollum. I am the Land use Coordinator for the Bethel Land use Department, a position that I have happily held for over many years. Most of the work I've done in my role here has been to serve as Bethel's Inland Weapons Agent and working with the Inland Weapons Commission. I am otherwise Beth's right-hand man, so to speak, when it comes to other matters in our office, the Land use Department, in which I add as a supporting role for her in development meetings up in the field and for you folks up here on the dais during your planning and zoning commission meetings. I will be frank with you all. Unlike some of the other persons that have presented to the committee previously on TOD, I don't have any credentials or professional certifications or anything that would otherwise warrant using letters after my name. I don't have a transportation engineering background like Eric Quenson or Director of Public Works. I also don't have the economic experience from whether in a community from the aftermath of an economic recession and giving Bethel the best chance for future economic success like our Economic Development, our Economic Development Director, Janice Kristianik. Lastly, I'm certainly not blessed with the quick recall of decades of institutional knowledge and other land use experience like Beth Cabana, our recently retired former town planner. However, likewise, through the time that I have been so far with Bethel, I've been attentive to discussion and public comment the commission has engaged to date regarding all things transit-oriented development. I also have the experience of attending most of the commission's meetings, especially for applications regarding TOD and other affordable housing-related applications. I'd like to offer my insights to the developments that you've presented, the public's perception and questions and concerns, your questions and concerns, and what the commission could consider as a response to all those going forward regarding TOD. For the public, I unfortunately cannot address you directly because this presentation is for the commission. I'm still going to do my best to include everyone that's in this room because I think everyone will benefit from what's being discussed tonight. So that being said, we've already introduced myself for those that don't know what we're talking about. TOD stands for Transit Oriented District, of which Bethels is located in what is socially understood as being Bethel's downtown. Where are we talking about? The downtown, as I just mentioned, when did this discussion begin? It's been ongoing for this commission and seemingly the community at large for over a year now, which seems like a really long time as far as discussions go, this board. But it really isn't, and I'll explain why as we go. Why does this matter? Because the community has been engaging with this commission to take a good look at what TOD means, Bethel's identity and how and shape what that looks like in the figurative and physical sense going into the future. How did you, the commission, go from here? The commission should consider getting input from experts, like you've already started doing. It's a long deliberative process, but there were a lot of professionals that gave this commission guidance and good thought for what TOD can do. You should consider hearing from most, if not all of them. Once you've exhausted this discussion progress, you as a commission, as Mr. Chairman briefly touched on, will want to begin the legislative process of amending the TOD regulations or whatever that looks like. And you'll accept a review, an application for zoning text amendment, a process which is spelled on the zoning regulations, and render a decision. It should be noted that anyone can submit a zoning text amendment at any time, assuming they have conducted a pre-application meeting with staff and have also submitted a complete application. To date, no one has offered such an application, nor have they indicated any interest to do so. Before we jump into the discussion for TOD, I've got a few slides of housekeeping I want to share with you guys. Some of you know I really like doing this, I apologize, I can't help myself. I just, we've got to address the elephant in the room, and that is affordable housing developments. The commission has recent experience with affordable housing in two forms. One's allowed for eight dash thirty G, connect the general statutes, affordable housing applications. And the other one being the Stony Hill mixed-use overlay district, the Schmuhood. So that being said, we've got an eight dash thirty G up on the screen. There is a presentation that has a hyperlink on the screen by Mark Brants, well-respected land use attorney with Halloran Sage regarding fair and affordable housing and specifically eight dash thirty G affordable housing applications. You can use this link on this slide to watch this on your own. Don't worry about trying to write it down or your camera to get a picture of it. This presentation is going to be distributed to all of you, and it's going to be available for future reference to the public on the commission's Google Drive after this meeting. Not to mention, this meeting is also being recorded. Even if you think you already know all the risks to know about affordable housing, you should consider watching. I can't do as nearly a good job as Attorney Branch does to present these materials, but I'll try to summarize it. Affordable housing applications, at least the ones that you've seen, are in some ways set aside developments by private developers where the zoning regulations and subdivision regulations are applied, provided at least fifteen percent of the units sold or rented are restricted to either persons with income as eighty percent or less than the state or area median income, whichever is the lesser, it's important. And fifteen percent of the units sold or rented are restricted to either persons with income that is sixty percent or less than the state or area median income, again, whichever is the lesser. There are some other conditions associated with these applications, such as an affordability plan being deemed restricted for forty years and so on. Since these applications are exempt from local zoning regulations, they can be built in any zone that isn't industrial. Or I also believe in Bethel's case, industrial parcel, to any size and number. Like I said, when we first got on this slide, this is an entirely different topic that is separate from TOD, warrants its own discussion. Okay, so let's go into the other type that you guys have recently seen, which is the Schmuhood, the total mixed-use overlay district. The Schmuhood applies to specific parcels of the Stony Hill Road. They had to have parameters, including a combined acreage of five acres or more, hundred and forty feet or more of blockwood and block furniture, and they had to be serviced by public utilities, i.e. public water and sewer. This regulation allows developers to construct more residential units than what was otherwise allowed in the Route Six business zone. So that's, like I said, right along Stony Hill Road, provided twenty percent of the total number of residential units were deemed affordable similar to eight dash thirty G. There were a couple mechanisms also for bonuses, but those really aren't important in the grand scheme of things because the commission approved a tax amendment to adopt this overlay zone in 2020. There was one application that used the Schmuhood regulations to come before this commission, which you subsequently approved. And then as that development got underway and the commission saw while this being constructed, you ultimately decided to adopt another tax amendment to effectively repeal the section of the regulations in 2022. It's worth noting, this section of the regulations was very open-ended from a developable perspective. So long as the use complied, a developer could propose any buildings to be any size or anywhere. It's almost like eight dash thirty G, but it's specific to Bethel. To my knowledge, there were only two other municipalities in Connecticut, not strong names, I believe, the Shultons and New Haven, that had adopted regulations with similar language. Whether or not those regulations are still in effect or how effective they are, I don't know. But I'll let the memory of your own experience from the application that you guys reviewed be the drug for that. One other important thing to note, even though the Schmuhood was repealed, the affordable housing component for the underlying Route Six business zone still remains where twenty percent of the units are residential units, that is, are deemed affordable, ten percent at eighty percent, ten percent at sixty percent, that's still the same. I included this because.
We're volunteers here, we're here for the TOD. Do we really need to spend twenty minutes of talking about Route Six?
I believe it's important, Mr. Parsons, and I.
We got people here waiting to talk about the TOD.
I'm very happy to answer your questions.
I have a question, I would like to get on with the TOD.
Understood, just, I have a few more slides that I would just like to present. Some of the commissioners in your comments to staff had asked about bus service to areas within the TOD. My laser pointer won't work on this screen, unfortunately, but this here is the bus line that serves Stony Hill Road. And this slide shows the bus service that goes towards Bethel's downtown in the TOD. You can find us online at heart. If I had a way to map this to make it coincide with what the TOD map showed, I would have done that. But this, I think, is the simplest way to correlate what the service is for what exists now. I also want to touch upon train. Because Eric, in his presentation to the commission, he gave some focus to the travel times to and from Bethel to Grand Central Station, which is the terminus for rail to New York City. What's on the screen right now is the weekday timetables for Metro North service on entirety of Danbury branch and the extended service that's offered to Grand Central, as has the day of this presentation. Train travel is an anchor for TOD, no question. But there is more to TOD than traveling by train. Bethel's history and development is proof of this, and I'll explain why. You'll see up on this screen, there are thirteen trains that offer service traveling to Grand Central starting from Danbury. And they travel south, and then there are twelve trains that made the return trip to Danbury. It's worth noting that not all of these trips are direct service. Most of these trips involve making a transfer at the South Norwalk station. In fact, there are only three trips to date that go directly to Grand Central from the Danbury branch, but otherwise from South Norwalk. A rider can either travel east or west along the New Haven branch to head to either Grand Central or a union station in New Haven or other points either further north or east. The point that I'm trying to make for this is that there's more to the ridership breakdown for commuters along the Danbury branch and focusing on those that go to and from Grand Central. And regardless of the commuters or travelers' ultimate destination, headway times on the Danbury branch at the Bethel station specifically, they don't change. The shortest headway time for persons traveling or arriving south is twenty-four minutes, and for persons traveling or arriving north is thirty-seven minutes. The longest headway in both directions, which is at night, is expected, is about three hours and forty-seven minutes traveling south or arriving southbound, and three hours and twenty-two minutes arriving northbound. The average headway time southbound is eighty-six minutes, and for northbound is five minutes. I make mention of this because Eric, in his presentation, he offered these two tables for transit service that give a rough correlation for level of service and density. If you recall the numbers that I just mentioned, I know it's really hard to see on the screen, but there's the middle column of the left-hand table shows the average headway in minutes. Now, I just mentioned that the average headway in both directions is over eighty minutes. That will correlate to a level of service of F. And if you go to the table on the right-hand side for density, it shows a tumbleweed. But Bethel's not a tumbleweed. How does this make sense? Because Bethel's TOD is more than train service. It should be noted that even during the golden age of rail, back when the New York, New Haven, and Hartford was the rail carrier for the Bethel branch, we never got more than ten trips a day for round-trip service. Now we have thirteen going south and twelve going north. There is a study that's ongoing from DOT regarding the re-electrification of the Hartford line, the Waterbury branch, and the Danbury branch. One of these is a press release, the other one is a report from ACON. The CGDOT is anticipating that this study will be completed by the end of 25. I highly recommend you just at least take a look at this to familiarize yourself with it because a consistent high-quality level of service for anyone traveling along the Danbury branch is the best inches for everyone and their communities along the Danbury branch and beyond. Okay, it is natural for everyone to, for everyday people to reason that the train station, ridership, and the level of service are all bellwethers for TOD success. But if this were the case, then people would judge the wheels on their car solely by the hub without considering the rims or the tires or brakes. Correlation is not causation. It's not the train is the vehicle for having good development. It's the train is available because of good development. People have been settling in this area long before the Danbury branch was built or Bethel became separate from Danbury or Danbury wasn't incorporated place for that matter. Bethel's development wasn't caused by the train, it was advanced by the train. TOD, to summarize, is a lot more than care into the white-collar workers that travel to and from New York City. It's about nurturing a downtown community that works for everyone. So that being said, what makes Bethel's TOD any better? Well, let's go right to the Bethel zoning regulations and read what the TOD zone is intended to do. Its purpose, which I'm not going to repeat, but it's there for you to read. And it specifies a lot of the things that this commission has already talked about in general over all of the applications that you guys have reviewed. How does Bethel's TOD accomplish this? Again, you go to what's in the master plan, you go to what's in the plan of conservation and development, and you go to what's in the zoning regulations. This, any, all of the items that I've quoted up here, they're just reference materials for that. I think it's worth noting that there are special provisions for frontage, building orientation, building massive materials, storefronts, common open space, yard exceptions, height exceptions, and an affordable housing requirement, which is separate from those other two that I mentioned before. Because in Bethel's TOD, for proposed dwelling units on a parcel of land where the number exceeds young five units or more, there's a requirement to provide twenty percent of those whole dwelling units for affordable housing. And that's similar to eight dash thirty G in terms of the requirements, but it's not eight dash thirty G. It's very different. Worth noting that a lot of this was crafted during the public outreach sessions and stakeholder meetings that were part of the Bethel Forum Master Plan, which everyone in this room and the commission were invited to attend and participate in way back in 2015 and 2016. So where is TOD? For, and I know you know a lot of this already, the planning and zoning commission in general, but I'm just trying to give a general refresher for some people that may be just engaging with this for the first time. So this is downtown Bethel. You can roughly see where, if my cursor is visible on the screen, this is the rail line here, Metro North, this is Greenwood Avenue, this is Durant Avenue, School Street. We're right here in this meeting room. And here's your map, maybe to see this on. I will have for you guys, I believe, later in the presentation, but this is.
Come on, we got to put an end to this.
All right, excuse me. This is just a brief synopsis of some of the stuff that came up in the commission's POCD, that is, stuff on the Bethel Master Plan Report. And now I want to go into some of the growing pains, for lack of better words, that this commission has heard from the public for applications that you guys have reviewed. There were concerns about how tall buildings would be, where parking was at the time, and the fact that it was considered to be a limited resource. There was also concerns about the downtown viability not being deluded. So existing businesses and other retail and commercial spaces, those had to be preserved and positioned to succeed with whatever else happened in Bethel's TOD. The last thing I think is worth mentioning is wetlands are a green resource. I mentioned this just because there's a large area of TOD that is shown to be open space. And that makes sense because it coincides with where wetlands and floodplain areas are. So obviously, as the inland weapons agent, it's part of my charge to protect those areas from impacts that are otherwise inappropriate or unnecessary. The reason why these areas are included in TOD is because there are parcels that are conjoints to those, or they have the wetlands areas on them, where there is proposed redevelopment for those properties. The ones that come to mind are the storage facility, the self-storage facility on Durant Avenue, and the processing facility, for lack of better words, for gold up on Paul Street. So I just figured I would put those in there. In terms of growing pains that this commission has heard from residents during public comments for TOD applications, this is just my experience, and you guys are welcome to disagree, or if you want to discuss this after my presentation is done. Excuse me, I would be happy to do that. The new building is too big. This is just a comment that you guys have taken in general for a lot of applications, whether it's been direct or through some other language that's been used. I'm just curious if you guys can guess which building in all of downtown Bethel is the longest? Anyone? Okay, it's eleven Durant Avenue, which is south of the Bethel train station, right past the complex with CVS Pharmacy and the gym, and that's at three hundred and sixty-eight feet. Which building has the biggest footprint? Eleven Durant Avenue again, and that's seventy-three thousand square feet. Okay, compare this to the largest building that the commission has approved dates within the TOD. And which one is that? Anyone? Okay, it's the grands two. And how big is it? Eleven thousand square feet. So it's size is much different than some of the existing buildings that were already here before this commission ever adopted TOD regulations. Another one that you guys have heard, this building is too ugly. I know it's cliche to say, beauty is in the eye of the beholder. The look of a building is a more subjective topic, but you guys have regulations to guide what good TOD development should look like. You also have an architectural consultant that reviews every application for new construction within the TOD. The plan of conservation development also recommends that Bethel establish a municipal cultural district to preserve Bethel's historical, scenic, and cultural resources. If the commission believes that this architectural review process isn't enough and that it should be more thorough or that another change is necessary, you can discuss what that is and discuss how you can make that happen. Here's another argument, or a comment that the public has raised. This new building will take value away from. This new building will take value away from my property. I'm not a real estate agent, but if you look at some of the properties that Beth will be sharing with you when she makes her presentation, you might change your mind on whether or not buildings in downtown have become more valuable. I'm going to lose customers if you don't require parking. Okay, refer to the findings in the Parking and Mobility Study. People often have the perception that parking is at a shortage if it isn't a convenience. Plenty of parking spaces were identified as being available in that municipal study, or that mobility study, right here, Bethel Parking Lot amongst others. And the commission should also explore ways to offer shared parking. For example, the town can work with five property owners to create parking agreements with the town for a public parking. Town can also reconfigure the removal of overnight parking at the old Bethel train station. There are plenty of recommendations made in the Master Plan Report, in the Plan of Conservation Development, the Parking and Mobility Study, and most recently by Eric, when he made his presentation in January. There's already too much traffic. This commission can recommend that the town adopts a complete streets policy as a first step towards moving downtown residents away from car dependency. Just as a point of clarification, the Parking and Mobility Study that we worked on, that was never meant to address traffic volumes for vehicles traveling through downtown Bethel. It was meant to talk about how to calm the traffic and how to make it facilitate the improvements you guys want to, or that could be made for other modes of transportation, like getting around on foot, being a pedestrian, or going by bike, or by scooter, or anything that isn't otherwise the car. Another argument that you guys have heard, we don't have the infrastructure to support this. Okay, there's one linchpin that I think has gone overlooked so far for all the applications that you guys have reviewed, and that's sewer allocation. Okay, the Paul Street Station, which is behind the golf complex, the Paul Street, you're allowed, or that state, the town of Bethel has an agreement with the city of Danbury to discharge, I believe, up to one point three million gallons per day in that substation. And if my numbers are correct, and if I'm recalling what the director for that department has mentioned previously, right now we're at roughly one point one million. Okay, it's worth noting, the Public Works Department and the Public Utilities Commission, they have a plan. They have an intention to revisit this. There's also lots of grants, steep grants, and plenty of other funding resources available through Westcott, that's the Western Connecticut Council of Gardens, and the State of Connecticut. I'm sure Janice can refresh you guys on some of the grant monies that she's worked with, you know, ISO planes. So trying to say that it's difficult for the town to be able to improve that infrastructure, there are ways that it can be done. It's just a matter of putting in the monies and getting it awarded for being able to make that happen. There's nothing to prevent a developer from buying a bunch of small properties, raising the existing houses and buildings, and merging the properties to make a bigger building. There's nothing in any of ours only regulations prevent a developer from doing the above anywhere in Bethel. And this has been the case since the town of Bethel adopted zoning regulations back in nineteen fifty-nine. And if people continue to visibly reinvest in their properties, as Beth will show you in some of her photographs again, it just, for a from a real estate perspective, it becomes less economically viable for a developer to justify a complete recycle of a property if there's already an existing use that's worth keeping. That being said, there are only two, there are two groups of properties that could come to mind for this concern, one of them being nine dash eleven Diamond Avenue, and the other being twenty-two dash twenty-four Nashville Road. The commission's already approved.
Mr. Chairman, point of order, we could take this under advisement. We don't need to hear two hours of testimony.
I'm almost done with my presentation.
You're done. You're done.
Break, break.
Order.
Please do not interrupt.
David, how much more do you guys have been going for? Forty minutes?
I'm on. Thirty minutes.
Let's show David a little respect.
Forty minutes is enough respect.
Excuse me, this is a member of the staff that you're speaking to in that.
I know, we're volunteers. We're not paid. He's being paid to be here. He can put it online.
We have someplace else to be. Go there.
They're the elected board. You're boss.
Exactly. They're the elected officials.
They're the elected people. You're the staff.
Excuse me.
David, how much more do you have?
I have.
Five minutes, ten minutes, twenty minutes?
I will do my best to.
Can you wrap it up in five more minutes, please?
Yes.
We have other people that.
Understood.
Thank you.
Okay. So this is an example of a vision plan that was in the Master Plan Report. It shows some of the parcels in Bethel's T O D as being good candidates for redevelopment. And the same goes for properties that are along Diamond Avenue and portions of Greenwood Avenue, if I'm not mistaken, and the stints that's also in that road. The point that I was trying to make here is that this master plan isn't meant to put pressure on properties to be redeveloped. Okay, there's nothing in the T O D that says these properties can't continue to exist. Just find the way they are. This just a vision. So I understand that there may be some people that are scared that this plan is meant to imply that something's going to happen down the road to what is on the property. But that's not the case. It's meant to be a vision plan. Okay, the last one that I think is worth echoing on, because I will have you guys read the rest on your own. We don't want Bethel's downtown to turn into Danbury. I can't speak for the comments offered by others. The comments that I offer are not meant to disparage Danbury. Danbury is a growing city that's making headway to improve its own downtown. They're in the second phase of landscape plan. They have an even broader mix of uses in their downtown area, some where you can have a nine-story residential building, an extra single-family home. This is extreme, but it's not otherwise uncommon to see buildings that are still larger than next to smaller units. This, it's not a sight, it's just an observation. This is not what's being suggested for Bethel, okay? Because Bethel, no one's suggesting that the buildings, that having buildings with similar size and scale, it is not appropriate for Bethel, because Bethel's not a city, and it's not trying to be Danbury. Bethel is Bethel, and it always has wanted to be Bethel. There are a couple of other points that I could touch on about students in the public school system, what does this do for the residents that already live here? But the last thing I think is worth touching on is the number of developments that have already been approved by this commission within T O D. Here's a table. I know it's difficult to read, but the addresses in black are ones that have already been approved. They're completed, they're built, they're sealed, they've got all their due to the properties in red. Those are ones that this commission has approved, but they haven't been started yet. And last but not least, you have the properties in yellow. You guys approved those, but they haven't been completed yet. It's worth noting that for all the perceived construction that's taking place in T O D, only one hundred and twenty-two residential units have been approved by this commission. And out of those, that total number, only twenty-five is deemed affordable. Those are small numbers. When you think of how long the T O D regulations have been in existence, which has been seven years to this point. Okay, if you compare this number to what the number of residential units was allowed for Fortisoli Hill Road, just a thought and address, this number is less. This number is less. Okay, what should you guys do going forward? T O D is an opportunity, but it's a challenge. You guys have to consider the number of applications you've gotten, how many of them have been approved, how many have been completed? And if you guys want this to be successful, it's your choice. There are a lot of people that have put a lot of effort into this, and there's over forty years of planning documents that in some way or form make mention of making improvements to downtown or T O D in general. It would be a disservice to you to discredit what's being said in there. So that's all that I have to say, and I'll let Bethel spring forward on with, or Janice, what she has to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, David.
Before I speak, I hear rumblings in the audience, and I am a little ashamed of some of the disrespect of others that has been occurring. Please, I just want to reiterate what the chairman said. This is a work session. The commission has taken in a lot of public comment, a lot of comment from certain aspects of the town, in-town staff, and people outside. This is staff's opportunity to take that all, all that information, put it together along with our own comments in regards to any of T O D or anything pertaining to the discussions that are occurring on social media, misinformation that's being broadcast out there. But we do, I have to tell you, before I say what I have to say, I have to, I have to say that I appreciate the time and effort that a few members of the general public that are here this evening have taken to attend meetings and listen to what is going on. I appreciate that more than anything in the whole world, because this is hard chat. All right, that's enough for the speech. Now I'm going to go back to the facts. So here we go. Can you pull up? I need assistance. I am not a computer savvy person. All right.
Your file's on the Google Drive, though?
Yeah, it says T O D.
Okay.
So what I did was, I think the best way to address anything in life, if the picture says, a thousand words. And what I want to do tonight for the commission, because many of you are new members of the commission, is to just review with you things that have occurred in town. That was a lot of your concern during some of your comments. But I also want to refer back to the old regulations of how things were versus how the T O D regulations have changed. And I want to start with the T O D pictures. It should be. It should be a T O D to start. I apologize. I can't do two things at once. I was a good mother of multitasking, but doing this with computers is not my first.
Start this one? Oh, okay.
Start with the graph. That's the period.
Oh, okay, got it.
Okay, so let's start with your zoning regulations. Prior to the initiation of the T O D zone, you had a commercial zone, and I'm going to focus on the downtown area. And anyways, before T O D, you had what you called the Village Center Zone or the Commercial Zone, which basically took up the downtown area. All right, T became effective in twenty eighteen. So what I did was a little bit of a chart to show you the primary focus of zoning itself. Pull it up, the whole chart. All right, so when you had the V C zone, you had setbacks, right? So your setbacks are front, rear. So you take those, and you look at the T O D mixed-use zone, those are your new setbacks. What is the difference between the two? Obviously, you can see that for yourself. I don't need to explain. Dealing with the stories and the heights of building in the commercial and V C zone for at least the last, I can't go back more than thirty years. I could, but I don't want to go there. I'm showing my age. It's always been three stories. Okay? Residential units, now there is a change. Residential units in the V C zone, we allowed ten. We've allowed ten for forty years. In the, in the T O D zone, we opted to thirty. The commission decided, no, that's too much. You went to twenty. Just a reminder to some of you that are new to the game. Originally, it was four stories in the T O D. You also made that change. And we'll get into that when I show you some of the pictures as to why some of these changes occur. Keep going down. Again, in the Village Center Zone or the Commercial Zone, you had lots of size depth with requirements. In the T O D zone, depending on the use that you want to use, those all change. Again, more flexibility as far as development or re-use. Just one thing I just want to note, and David touched on it. Within the V C or the T zone, they can make combined and existing structures removed. We're getting a zoning in nineteen fifty-nine. I will just add a little bit to that. There may be one or two little preferentials in regards to that, dealing with maybe a historical structure. We might have some teeth because it is a historical truffle structure to eliminate the demolition. And that's something that you could take into consideration, too. All right, so go back to the, so I'm just going to go to the pictures. All right, no, I don't want to start with that. I want to start with that. One. All right, so I believe in starting with the worst case and then working up to the best. This picture is a picture of seventeen Whitney Road. Seventeen Whitney Road came in, just to give you a brief example of, you know, the pictures are made to planning and zoning and development. Whitney Road came in under the T O D regulations. Whitney Road came in, I think it was thirty units, was a three-story, one-large building in the middle of a residential area, residential meaning single-family zones, two families, height required, you know, three, three and five feet in height. So what happened was, they came in, they made application. After talking to staff and staff trying to encourage them to say, this isn't really what is T O D. They insisted, let's go through it. They went through the process. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the application. Planning and Zoning Commission denied the application with the recommendation that they come back and meet the regulations pertaining to T O D, dealing with height and size of the building, making it more adaptable to the neighborhood in which it was proposed. The use of the property as it exists today is an industrial use. It is a contractor's garage, yard, whatever you want to call it. All right, that was denied. Here's where David, talking lip, excuse me, I'm trying, I'm getting interrupted with stuff in the back there. In regards to what David was trying to give you was a little bit of background, because now the Affordable Housing Act comes into play. The property owner said, no, we're not going to make the changes. We're not going to do anything. We're going to plan with an eight-eighty-G application, an affordable housing application. And that's what they did. What they did was, they increased the amount of units on the property. They went to, I think it was forty, forty-two units, say, to a four-story building, applied for an affordable housing project, was denied by the town of Bethel. We went to court. We are waiting for the judge's decision at this time. So in other words, that is, that I will tell you from the years I've experienced with T O D, that is the worst case that has happened. When that happened, the commission initially, immediately took the initiative to look at the regulations, particularly pertaining to height in the T O D zone. They changed the regulation. So what they did was make it, made it, you cannot exceed the height of the underlying zone. So if you live in a single-family, I'm talking to them more just, I'm sorry, just so they have a better understanding of zoning in that respect. But I apologize. You live in a single-family house, you look at the regs, it's thirty-five and a half feet or two and a half stories. You want to do something in the T O D in that particular area, it can only be two and a, it has to meet the underlying zone. So therefore, Greenwood Avenue, for example, it's three stories. So you have to meet the underlying zone of three stories. You can't do four, you can't go five. You made that correction. And the only way you learn when regulations don't work is by mistakes that are made. You learn from mistakes. That being said, let's go from Whitney Avenue to go to the beginning and start at one. All right, this is a portion, this is. This is um, a portion, this is, I'm hearing a beeping. Is anyone else hearing like a?
Yes.
Is anyone hearing, does somebody have a phone on that's beeping?
Stop.
Not from up there, it was coming from up front.
It's coming from up here?
That's correct.
Thank you. All right, I'll try to ignore it. Let's start with the grand. Grand two was put, was built according to the TOD regulations. It's a twenty-six unit B of building and has six units of affordable housing. Prior to the grand two being built and the grand one, the land that is associated with it was barren land. It was a former land containing uh, oil storage facility for uh, dolans. The first grand one was built, the second grand two could not be built unless we did something with, unless something was done with regulations. TOD came to be, grand two was built. Just, I'm giving you historical information so you understand how these things happen and the positiveness that occurred along these lines. Would the grand two be built? Um, people that live along Grand Street, if anyone is here, they will be familiar with the twenty to thirty years of dealing with having six to seven restaurants with garbage associated with it that dealt with um, the containers that you put in grease and waste and things located right up against to the properties there. This developer wanted to do more work, working with the developer, working with um, their proposal here. We got them to remove the garbage, make a very good containment area closer to the railroad tracks. Um, there's that problem. The grand two also provides, I believe I said affordable housing. It's done according to the TOD regulations. And um, this commission approved it accordingly. Next is. That's number two. Okay, this is two fifty-three Greenwood Avenue. Two fifty-three Greenwood Avenue is a two-family home. Uh, it's, I couldn't quite get the back of the property. The back of the property contains a, an a thousand square foot barn that was converted to two apartments and one small office. Um, architecturally, it's done very well, very tastefully. Um, and it is adaptable to the neighborhood. Under the VC regulations, that would not be able to be completed. Under the VC regulations, if someone wanted to expand on this property, it's in the commercial zone. By right, they could have probably two units, but again, it depends on the parking. Um, you could not, if you wanted to put, if you can follow me, if you wanted to put a building in the back, you would have to follow the setback rules. Therefore, you wouldn't be allowed to put a building in the back. Any improvements that you would want to make to the structure, it would have to be in, attached to the structure, which enlarges it, takes away from that single-family home from here. Next. This is um, what I call the old Triscoll Building, two thirty-five Greenwood Avenue. Under the TOD regulations, this garage that was located into the rear of the property was able to be converted to an apartment. Um, the conversion makes it look like it's been there for a while. It also um, did not impede anything dealing with parking regulations or things of that nature under the VC zone that was not an allowed use. This, again, I want to talk a little bit about the architecture dealing with the TOD regulation. If you recall, this is next to, I, I apologize, I go by old names, Ray Flanagan's place on Greenwood Avenue and the Escape Paris salon. Um, this is located between the two because of the architectural requirements under TOD. Um, this is, this house was rehabbed. There is an office located on the bottom floor and I believe two apartments located to the rear. Under the VC regulate, uh, VC zone, there was no regulations pertaining to um, requiring specific architecture to occur with on a structure. We were able to guide them, we can ask, but there is nothing that tells them that they have to do it and abide by this. If someone is going to spend, if you look at the detail in regards to this building, if someone is going to spend that type of money on the amenities associated with this building, there should be something that works along the same lines as incentive. Incentive is, I believe that they were able to pick up one more unit in regards to that. This is behind um, two twenty-two Greenwood Avenue, where the barber shop is located. If you recall, again, I see people that have white hair, white hair. We're like, there used to be a fabulous store there called The Hangup, run by Olympia Miller years ago. It was a very square box looking front area. And now because of TOD and the request of the property owner who wanted to put in additional units, he was able to take the rear portion of the property, put in two additional units in this barn-like structure, which you really don't notice. But at the same time, we as the town, working with the Planning and Zoning Commission, got them to, I think it's the next one. No? Go back. Sorry. No, word, gold. All right. Look for two, 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 go back to that. I apologize. That's it. No, go back. All right, we'll keep going. I apologize, let's keep going. All right, this is one fifty-five Greenwood Avenue. This one's um, had some controversy to it, dealing with the height of the structure and the amount of parking associated with it. If you look at the front portion of the building, one fifty-five, and you think of um, what it looked like prior to, um, it was the doctor's office on the first floor and I think there was a so-called department on the second floor. Um, I hope the rest of the property follows behind there. This is the rear portion of the property under the TOD regulations. If you recall, prior to this being built, it was a beautiful tree, I would say, in the back uh, with a little of a sword or a hatchet or something in there and dirt. Um, many people have talked about, why didn't we do it for parking? As far as combining it with other lots prior to the institution of TOD regulations. It's the town's choice, the town chose not to. Um, in regards to this property, under the TOD regs, yes, there is a parking reduction associated with it and it's mostly associated with the commercial uses. The commercial uses total about nine thousand, six thousand. I think it's about, no, three, I'm sorry. About approximately, I think it's about three thousand, three to six thousand square feet.
I think it's five thousand.
All right, I'm close. The first floor is commercial, the second floor is residential containing, I believe thirteen or fourteen units. There is some affordable housing in regards to that. Um, the parking was reduced in order for this structure to be built. I will, at this point, I will just remind you, I know it's a lot of information, but it's a lot to discuss and to get out there. I have to tell you, when you talk about parking in relation to the downtown area, the first reduction, every port party that has ever walked in here for any kind of site development or redevelopment in the downtown area, has requested a parking reduction. With the exception of two twenty-two Greenwood Avenue, the one I just showed you. Where, where did parking reduction um, initially start? I would tell you that it started with the Bethel Library when they put the addition on, which consists of three floors and I think it's approximately thirty thousand square feet. They received a parking reduction because they had no parking with the understanding that some of the parking would be built adjacent to the Bethel Town Hall, which was never completed. So that's where your, your first issue, in my opinion, parking began, was the neglect of the town to follow through with an approved site plan and build accordingly. But I will also tell you, the town did not build it because at the time, the library didn't have enough money to finish the library. So the town waived and you, as not you people, but you as a commission, agreed with the town to waive the building of the actual parking. So I've just given you a little bit about that, but I will tell you that there have always been ways to reduce parking in the downtown area. And I will tell you, nine out of ten times, it has been reduced. And also along those same lines, if the reductions were not given, you would see tumbleweeds in downtown Bethel. All right, keep going. This is, I'm losing, uh, one forty-eight Greenwood Avenue. This is the old sty building where there was a fire in regards to fire that happened there. Um, prior to the fire, there was um, rooms for rent, like a rooming house type of situation upstairs on the other levels. When the fire occurred, there was opportunity to work with the property owner using the TOD regulations and the residential allowances for TOD to change those units into apartments. I believe there's five apartments in there. Again, I'm speaking um, from history. But also, the rear portion was cleaned up. There was parking spots created in the park, in the back of the property, more so for the residential component of the property than for the commercial public that wishes to go to the two units down there. Again, a side note, if this was done under the VC or the old regulations, for example, if you took that part, the bottom portion of the property and you wanted to divide it up into more units for commercial, you would not be able to because you don't have the parking. Under TOD, you can. Next. This is one of my favorites. This is one twenty-three. This used to be where the little antique guy was that became growing all over um, that corner and the sidewalk. After he was finally left the premises, we had to start to try to work out, what can we do with this piece? Under the VC regulations, it was very, very difficult to change the use from an antique shop to anything else without making them put in parking. But under TOD, because you can take into consideration the parking located on the streets, the parking located in other areas, the town lot is um, over behind the building, you have the opportunity to be flexible in your standards. So therefore, that originally was going to be a little wine, wine tasting bar type of situation. Um, but I believe it's uh, an office or a store at this point right now. Famous Pizza, BT Barnum Square. Again, I'm just trying to give you the differences so you can see what was, what would have, what it could have been like versus what it is. Famous Pizza, Famous Pizza is an old complex. Um, it had one restaurant, Famous Pizza in it and um, other retail units. I'm just. Other retail units. If this was not the TOD zone, the town would never consider allowing a property owner to put another restaurant in there. Because under the VC zone, parking for a restaurant or under the old regulations, parking for a restaurant are very, very, are, there's a larger amount required. It's two uh, two spaces for a hundred square feet. All right? Um, if this were to change and go back to our original regulations, if someone came in and wanted to change the use under the VC regs, it would be very complicated to try to work with that change. This is seventy-seven South Street. It has been controversial over the years because it has been very, very slow in being built. But again, you will see there is some progress being made within the last nine months, dealing with one of the sods on, on the one side of the building. I will tell you, the other side of the building, there have been uh, major discussions and issues involving the structure in relation to the codes that need to be followed adjacent to a railroad track. Way to explain it to you without getting into the details of it. But there are setback requirements regarding that and the state of Connecticut's been working with the town um, on that for quite some time. Am I correct there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it's been a long time. Next. This is eighty South Street. Eighty South Street is under the TOD. If you notice the location of the building in regards to the sidewalks in a regular VC zone that would not be allowed, you would have to at least start your building twenty feet from the front line of your property. Um, when in regards to this, the, the flow of the building, I believe is very prominent of what a TOD can be, just dealing strictly with residential with the amenities, garbage, parking and things of that nature located to the rear of the property. Oh, and I'll end with this. Um, this is Notching. Formerly the Spa, formerly Pete's, if anybody's old enough to remember that. Um, look at the notch. In regards to the notch, um, if we went, if we had the old regulations dealing with the VC zone, the extensive patio that's located near to the front of the porch and I believe there's an outside exterior um, bar setup, if I correct, uh, would not be allowed. We don't, there is not enough room to meet uh, the setback requirements and things associated with the commercial VC zone for this to have happened. It strictly happened under TOD. Now, again, working with the town, some of the amenities associated with this, I'm trying not to bore you all, but I'm trying to give you is a little bit, a little dose of information as we go forward with this. If you recall, to the rear of this property, there was a little shed and a dirt rep, dirt parking area and things of that nature. What happened was, when, when we were working with the applicant, uh, along the way, we have a paved area in the back, even have one handicap parking and um, specific areas for garbage and, and things of that nature. Um, this is to me, one of the best examples of a vibrant downtown area um, and the work that has gone into this. And just for some of you to just also recall, it has had a ripple effect. Particular property owner of this owns the uh, the great building, the, what is it called now?
Shakedown.
Shakedown, thank you. He owns Shakedown, that's where he started. He went from Shakedown to the Spa. From the Spa, he also has Tony's now in the Dolan Plaza. Um, just to give you a little symptom of how it can grow in a vibrant community. Um, and again, this is to show you what has, what has been done to the best of my ability with TOD, but also have, I've tried to include the negative aspects that have occurred during the TOD process to date. I hope this is helpful for the commission. And I can, I apologize, I spoke to the public more than you. Um, but I was trying to make sure that the public could understand what I was saying and I'm trying to do it in the most simplest of terms. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. You have something for us?
So um, the Economic Development Commission had put together um, a letter to your commission that was also on the drive. It's probably about five pages long, so um, I don't know if you want us to go through it, but if you don't want us to go through it, I would like to give the commission members an opportunity to speak.
Want to give us the highlights, Bart?
Yeah, so the highlights are really talking about um, the Bethel Ford plan and the purpose for having it. And it was really because at the time, Bethel Ford, I mean, to David's point, TOD is not something new that we've been talking about. We've been talking about TOD since two thousand and seven when we got our first planning grant to start looking at TOD. So it's not a new concept. But in uh, two thousand and fourteen, uh, the Economic Development Commission was able to apply for a grant to put towards a more um, robust planning for not just TOD, but for downtown in general. At that time, downtown was really suffering. Um, we had tons of vacancies, we had no interest from developers, we weren't attracting businesses and we needed to do something. Um, and so we initiated, we got the money, planning and zoning contributed to that planning session and we did planning. We have our DPC, which is one of the um, top planning associations within the United States. We hired them, they came and we went through months and months of public sessions, stakeholders. We had hundreds of people between businesses, property owners, community members, um, attend those sessions and the plan that we came up with is a few hundred pages. Very, probably the largest project, planning project we've ever done as a town. And not only was it about planning and TOD regulations, but it was about economic development. What do we need to do as a town to help our businesses and to help our downtown community which wasn't doing well? We've seen a lot of positive um, changes to the downtown, but we're not done yet. Businesses are still struggling. Restaurants are struggling, especially the restaurants. Restaurants are struggling, especially the restaurants on the west side of the tracks. So where La Placita is, we have three vacancies, they've been vacant for a good year. Across from the Bethel Cinema, we have four turnovers of businesses within less than a year. Restaurants, retail business services are still struggling. We, like I said, we have made some improvements, like one fifty-five Greenwood Avenue. We went from ten thousand in real estate taxes to over a hundred thousand dollars in real estate taxes. So not only have we been able to make, to attract new businesses, to attract new investment. We've been able to raise, raise the grand list as well. And it's all about incremental development. It's not about, we have this fantastic train station and everybody's going to take the train. It's about creating incremental developments to get to that point where people want to take the train. Where people are walking, where people aren't car dependent. It doesn't happen overnight. If you look at all of the. Of the areas that Eric outlined in his, his presentation to you, they all didn't start with fantastic transit. They all started with transit and as development came in and the use of that transit or the need for that transit increased. Then there were, there were investments made within that transit. Look at South Norwalk, look at Darien, look at Nagata. All those areas didn't start with. The best transit, they just had transit. And then people can, and over time, the investments started to be made within that transit system. We created the TOD plan around Bethel. What Bethel needed, we needed people downtown, living downtown. If you talk to any of the businesses, Bethel's not supporting our downtown. It's Redding and it's the other towns around us that are supporting our downtown. We need to create a demographic that's using our downtown. We need to have more businesses in downtown that can support each other. So the information that we provided is really about those goals. The goals were to make downtown economically more viable. Because it wasn't. But we're still not where we need to be. And without TOD, we're just not going to get there. We're just not going to get there. So it talks about the economics, it talks about the tax. The tax dollars that we've been able to bring in. It talks about the businesses that we've been able to attract, that we wouldn't have been able to attract before. Talks about the development, the developers, qualified developers that we were not able to attract before. Experienced businesses, I said, we were very good at. Attracting hobbyists to our downtown, to these locations. That in a year, they were out of business. Now we're attracting businesses that have experience, that have been here for two, three, four or five years because of the TOD. So. That's basically what it really is about, the economics of it and really the goals of the TOD. And so it was really about just creating a vibrant downtown. And we've come a tremendous way. You can talk to any of the business owners, you ask them today, it's going to be the same thing. The people living in downtown, we have industrial property that doesn't add to our downtown on Diamond Avenue. It just doesn't. It doesn't add any tax. Nobody wants to, I've been trying to market that property for, for the time that I've been here and it's been vacancies prior to that. Nobody wants to move an industrial business in the middle of a downtown that's not near a highway, right? Or is not near any of the road access that they need. And residents, we shouldn't want. That those types of uses in our downtown, look at the bus station, right? It's a great example of an industrial use in our downtown that not only doesn't fit the character of our downtown, it increases the traffic in our downtown. Those are the types, if we can attract businesses over there, those are the types of businesses we're going to be able to attract. Just leaving it industrial and not leaving it transit oriented development. And it also, in here, it talks about the, the, the grants and the money that we've been able to get. So as we've talked about before, the state is, one of their primary goals is around transit oriented development. So I listed six or seven grants that were eligible for just for having a TOD district. It doesn't include the dozens of other, other grants that were eligible for just for infrastructure improvements in our downtown. Which just saying that we have a TOD district puts us above and beyond any of the applications that don't have a TOD district. Because the state wants to see investments in our downtown and they want to see it around transit. And so without TOD, then we would not be eligible for those grants. And we would probably be less eligible for grants that aren't specific to TOD, but are for downtown improvements. So it also, the letter also talks about that as well, so. I don't know if anybody from the commission would like to. Would like to speak out as well, but I mean, we'd be happy to. If once you've had an opportunity to read it, if you haven't yet, if you had any questions. We'd be happy, or I'd be happy to answer them now or at later.
Anything, Janice? Do you have any other? Do you have anything?
Uh, no, I mean.
No pressure.
In, in some, I would encourage all commission members to. Read the letter that was penned by the commission and signed by myself. Really, the slant here, and I don't want to, I am, I happen to be a land use attorney myself, so I do have. Specific zoning opinions and things of that nature, but I think. So simply sum those up and I don't need to go there. Our slant on being here and. Was that this plan, Bethel Ford and TOD was a joint plan. With Economic Development Commission and Planning and Zone Commission, developed over years, quite expensive. It's a plan that we think is actually working. And the misnomers on why it's not working are things that really aren't TOD centered. Eight S thirty G, yes, that's, that's a problem with both. But that is not the TOD. Ridership on the train is not the TOD, that's just one component. But again, as Janice summed up and is in words untail with the letter to your commission. We are in support of holding on to the TOD. Maybe there's revisions and Beth spoke to some revisions that were tweaked here or there. And based upon experience and circumstance of having the plan in place over years. But a wholesale. Remove of the TOD to. Back to the old ways of the underlying zone or even taking properties that were designed to be in the TOD. Not, not by us public, but through public input. But by planners who do this for a living and are experienced and took. Years of time to go forward with a plan. We think. There's, there can be some unintended consequences if we just wholesale remove it or revise it sufficiently. Or not provide it sufficiently, revise it if we consider it. Because we think it's working, to tell you the truth.
Alright. Thank you very much. Any other? Members that. Mission, anything to add?
Well, basically, I think that what staff has tried to do with the help of others dealing with the economic aspect of it is to provide you with. I hate to say true. True, but more data. Less for quite, you ask questions. I think that we have tried to do our best to answer those questions in order to give you good information. In order to come to some conclusions in regards to. Changes that you may want to make to TOD to some aspects of the general public that wants it. Or and one, at least one member of the commission that wants it repealed. And I, I do believe that now you need to take a deep breath. And think about it. Discuss it or ask us questions if you have anything off the top of your head that maybe we can take care of for you this evening. But otherwise, I, I think it's a pretty good conclusion. One thing I do want to tell you are, that I forgot to mention. During when I was speaking was, and I'll, what I'll do is I'll put it in the drive with everything else. Because it was more verbal, using the visual aspects of it. I did take the Wells Fargo building. The bank, the former, the former Wells Fargo Bank. And I applied the VC. You know, the old regulations, I hate to call it that, but the, the old regulations to the property. And also the TOD regulations to the property. And I tried to do it very conservatively. And I'll provide you that information. And the reason for that is for the parking. The parking ratios associated with development of that property. I don't know who bought it, but it'll be very interesting. To see what can we have done with it.
Big listeners having thoughts?
Yeah. I don't want to get rid of it. But I want to have some changes. I see some benefits. My real problem though is with density, residential density. We got a good example right outside this building here. There was a three family semi Victorian and the TOD allowed another one on R ten. You could reach right out the window and almost touch it, it's that close. And the only reason they didn't build more is because there was a parking limitations. We never would have allowed that. And that is my issue. It's not with business, I want as much business as possible. I've been voting for almost every single thing that has apartments. Maybe one or two was really bad and I didn't vote for. But it's density. We don't need more density, more density is more expensive, more people, more everything. Affordable, I've been voting for all of them but one. So I'm not against it. I, I want progress. But my problem is density. Too much is a problem. That's my feeling.
Thank you, Ken.
Eric? For me, it was. I think it was nice to hear you say that, I think. My sense has been lately, there's been almost a sense of urgency to. Talk about repealing or drastically changing the TOD and I, and I feel like. Hearing about history, I think is important, so thank you for taking the time to kind of, I mean, just speaking for myself, educate me on. Where we were and where, where we are now, I think that's, that's good for me to know. And I think we, we kind of owe it to, to folks that invested a lot of time. Previously to put this plan into action and, and I know there's a lot of resources developed, so I just. I, I want to caution us against doing anything hastily. So I appreciate you saying, we're not, we're not there yet and it seems like there's been a sentiment that we're trying to get someplace. Quickly and, and I just want to make sure we're making decisions for the right reasons. With a, with a plan in mind that really meets our needs as a town, so. Thanks for taking the time tonight, everyone that, that talked and I, I have to read the letter from the, the economic. Commission and I will do that, thank you for taking the time to do it.
I did read your letter. And I, I guess there are a lot of different questions, I guess, but. My concern is that, you know, the walkability issue is key. I don't think we have that, I know that's, that's one of the main things and reducing the traffic and reducing the need for cars. So, you know, the whole sidewalk issue where. A lot of them are broken up or nonexistent now or whatever. I know there's one place that, that we just approved. That's claiming one point five eight miles away that, that it's walk, walkable to the train station. And I did a Google. Search or whatever and it would be thirty-five minutes.
What's that?
The Putnam Park, nine Putnam Park. So.
Nine Putnam Park?
Yeah. I mentioned that to you before, but I didn't. Oh, I know, I know it's not.
That's an affordable, here's an opportunity. That's not in TOD, that is an affordable housing project under state statute eight thirty-two. Has nothing to do with zoning or with TOD.
Right, but the point is. It's one point five miles away and I think the, the radius that we have for TOD. Is similar to that, so, so the, the timing to walk is not really doable. And I know that the people that when we had the other meeting were concerned about, you know. Diamond Ave being two miles away or whatever and it's just not walkable, so. But my concern is, you know, we want to make, make it so that the. Commercial areas thrive, but I don't think that we need to have. The, the distance so far as far as residential, I, I, it's just not walkable for people, so. I, I think we do need to do some. Jimmying on it and. You know, some of the goals that we have, I, you know, was reading the letter and, you know, some of the things have, have been met, but some of them are not. Not able to be met in some cases, so. In the letter from, from you guys. So I think that's all things that we need to consider. And maybe if that means also changing the VC regulations or whatever. If we have to make a change in. Now in the TOD regulations or in the size of it or whatever, where it's located, I think it, it's all stuff we have to look into.
Yeah, I just want to, since you mentioned the letter. The goals are what we're working towards. It's not that we have the most walkable, it's not that we have the best sidewalks, it's, it's working towards that. And it's not just that for the train, it's just not about the train. It's about bus transit. Our bus goes from one side of Greenwood Avenue all the way down to the other side of Greenwood Avenue. So you can get off the bus in front of Escape Salon as an example and walk over to Diamond Avenue. Right, that's your transit, it's just not train and I know. Eric's presentation was really geared towards train, but transit oriented development is not just about.
Right, but I think we need to have those spots shown on the maps so that we know where that is. So that we can see, you know, is that walkable, is it ridable? So I, I think that, you know, we do need to do a little bit more work, I think. So I guess we're pretty much.
Thank you, Dan.
One housekeeping item, Jeff, you showed up late, shame on you. I'll see Jeff from Mike's house.
Thanks everyone for all your time and efforts put in, appreciate that. You know, I think the TOD is, I think it's clear from tonight to me that the TOD is beneficial to the town of Bethel. You know, there are concerns. You know, density that Ken speaks about, you know, I'm not sure, I'm convinced that TOD is bringing density. I think we have density and obviously our E W G projects. Yeah, I think I have a. And if I wanted density in this town, I would probably put it downtown. I wouldn't put my density in Jimmy Heights, wouldn't put my density, you know, out by Hunter and State Park, so. You know, we need people in this town to. Go to our establishments and go to our restaurants and make them fly. And bringing in small amounts of people, we want all the projects that Beth showed. You know, some of them were probably high stores, that's probably why she didn't show them the four pictures. I'm just guessing.
I cried, but I couldn't find any.
So, you know, so there's a lot of improvement and it gave developers opportunity to invest in a small piece of property. Cause hey, I can get an apartment out of that, you know, I don't want to buy it if I can't get an, an extra permit. And, you know, and it's done well because we have architectural review. And that's huge, this, this is the only area in town that we have architectural review. Maybe that's something we can also address, adding architectural review outside of here. Yeah, I think it was a lot of helpful information.
Thank you.
Again, thanks, I echo all the sentiments about, thank you for, for being spending the time here. I do think density is a huge problem for me as well. Density congestion. I don't mean to harp on your restaurant example, but you know what, there, there's a. If you looked at restaurant usage, between five and eight, they're packed. And then they're empty. Bringing more people isn't going to change that fact, it's not going to make people come out for lunch or dinner at three o'clock. So. The restaurant's a tough example and a tough business and I understand the restaurants are struggling and others are thriving. Businesses are doing fantastic. Well, I don't know these books, but you can tell, like. The traffic. That is, businesses are doing fantastic, but it's, it's that same cyclic loading of people are there from those, in those, those hours, peak hours. And they're empty, the restaurants, that's the same anywhere you go. I ate a lot of lunches out, so I see empty restaurants a lot. But I, I do also think that we're, we're coming under attack by unscrupulous builders. The examples you presented about the, of the, of the winners, they're fabulous, right? The people who worked and were hand in hand and back and forth. But we can't escape the fact that there's builders that come in here and just want to beat the hell out of the system. Right, they want to get every nickel they can and they don't care what it looks like. And they're going to turn their back and walk away from it and that, that I think is part of our responsibility to defend that. And I think we've seen examples of the TOD, the, the example you led with. So it is a horrible example of being used against us, right? And so, so we made adjustments, but I also think now we're watching it play out, we're now post-COVID, we're seeing all kinds of different things. I think there's, there's time for readjustment. That, that's my, my take on it, I think we need to make sure we can't get taken advantage of. And there's always the eight thirty G in the background that can make us be taken advantage of, but hopefully we'll solve that problem too. We need to lock down what we can and make it so we get the results. I think we need to lock down what we can and, and make it so we get the results.
Thank you, Doug.
Mr. Chairman? I want to give a, I was asking. Go ahead.
Uh-uh.
Mr. Legner?
Yeah, uh, I'd like to thank everybody that made a presentation tonight. Uh, very informative, factual. It's good to get the facts out there before the general public. So that we, we could do away with some of the nonsensical misnumbers that we've been hearing over the past year. Uh, I, I think, I agree TOD is working. I think TOD is, 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 is working and demonstrating that is the fact we were able to sell two, two more lots on Clark Park. Uh, Tony Rizzo had made a great investment in the Burney Building. And that's what, and that's what we're after is, is, is people that are willing to make an investment in the town, whether it be big or small. Some of them are big, some of them are small, and some of them are just a barn back behind the building, which keeps that building in front alive. We don't, don't tear them down. We don't, you know, tear down the whole block. Put up a strip mall. That's not what we want downtown. But I think we, we, it's good to get the facts and figures out there so that we can make a probable educated decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Legner. Uh, Ken, did you have something before I made my comments? Go ahead. I'll wait. Um. Well, my thoughts in a, on a whole are uh, thank you for everyone for their, um, presentations and all the information. I have pages of notes, and I think it's keeping me busy with. Um, I echo, uh, Kenny and Doug's sentiment that, uh, the, um, housing density is an issue that I have. Um, one other issue that hasn't been touched on is parking. I've talked to some business owners downtown, and the same thing I hear over and over is parking. We need more parking. Um. Janice, you even kind of touched on it, that you hear from business owners that Redding and surrounding towns support our downtown more than Bethel does. They drive here. Um, we will bet most everyone in this room drove here tonight. I'm, I'm not going to say, but, I mean, I did. So just to say that we're going to give up cars and move to a more walkable town is not feasible for Bethel. Um, you had compared us to South Norwalk, Darien and Nogatuck, saying that they didn't have good, um, train service, mass transit. Now they do. But I, I don't, I don't ever want to see Bethel become South Norwalk. I, I don't want to see us become Darien or even downtown Nogatuck for that matter. I like that small town feel. I like having to be able to jump in my truck and run down to Carlousie's. That's just me. Some people want to live across the street from Carlousie's, and that's fine too. But I just don't ever want to see, uh, like, like, um, David mentioned, downtown Danbury, where you're having nine-story buildings. And I'm not saying TOD is encouraging nine-story buildings. But it's the, the tip of the iceberg, it feels like, to me anyways. Um, some of the commercial aspects that were touched on um, by you and, uh, by Beth, all great. Um, I like seeing, like, the, the notch and the, the driving by in this, on the weekends and in the summertime, hearing the music. Great. I love it. I think it's awesome. Um, the food is great. I love going down there. I don't get to go out very much. I'm a little kid, but, uh, it, it is, it is a cool place. I like the vibrant spots of downtown Bethel. Um, so it's tough because I understand that you need the people to keep commercial. But I feel like as a town, we've reached our tipping point as far as density with people. Um. So I'm just trying to figure out where do we put more parking? Where do we, how do we reduce the attacks, I guess? Like, uh, you had said, you know, we're getting, taken advantage of. We saw that in one, um, one application that we denied under TOD, and they just came in 830G, bigger and worse. So it just makes you feel like that was really their intention the whole time. Um. I don't know if there's a way maybe to tweak TOD to require uh, a commercial aspect, kind of like we did in the schmoo. So just, I'm just spitballing, you know, um, for something downtown.
I I, I can just take, what I would do is I would just take.
Yeah, I'm just spitballing here.
All of it. So everybody's has made comments, which is great. Because what the impression I'm getting from you is there are two major issues dealing with TOD. One is residential density component, and the second one is parking. Um, in regards to TOD with traffic. Traffic is an overall town issue. It has absolutely, in my opinion, nothing to do with TOD. Parking and the residential den, density is a very critical component. And I, my suggestion to you all is to have further discussions of that at another meeting. Because now I know what you need to know, and again, I can help you with that as far as parking. And the zoning regulations.
Well, one other point I was just going to finish up with.
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. You're fine. Open dialogue is fine. I'm, I'm cool with it. Is this, and it was touched on when we talked about Diamond Ave, I think it was last year, about this, um, footbridge over, over the, um, the train tracks. I, I would argue that I would love to see a road crossing somewhere in the TOD. Uh, and make that a requirement to add the west side of the tracks in. Because without it, you're going to have such a bottleneck. Agreement Avenue, we have it already there. Which, and you're right, traffic is traffic. You're not going to get away from it. But that's a kind of a screwy intersection as it is. All the roads don't kind of line up there with, uh, Depot Place. And now if you're for, if you were bringing in this much more dense, I'm just using Diamond Ave as a, as a, as an idea. You know, you bring in all this, and that's, if a person's got to get in their car to drive to Carlousie's, you know, you just, I'm just, again, bringing this as an example that we all do. Um. That's just, you're having a choke point here, where if you made it kind of staged, hey, once we get this road crossing in at another point, that'll allow this section to be gone with TOD. But just to say it is now, and then, um, if a project gets built and you get the density, you're just adding to a problem whenever getting the infrastructure. It's requiring the infrastructure first to allow the building after.
Yeah, so I don't know how, how in-depth you want to get into this tonight. But in regards to a road crossing from the west to the east side, I can get into it with you now, but it's probably going to consist of more than a 10-minute conversation.
No, we don't need to get into it. I'm just, you know, just.
No, I don't need to get into it. You give me the history associated with it.
Yeah.
Because, because what you're saying is absolutely spot on.
Yeah.
But it's already been discussed and investigated. And the state of Connecticut has said no.
So then, that being said, then in me, I have a hard time then, including the west side of the tracks to the TOD.
Okay.
Because you're going to, you're just encouraging more choke point down here on Graham Avenue and Durant at the, at the.
Again, you're assuming that it's, they're going to the train.
Have an argument.
Yeah.
So argue the point.
Yeah. The only thing I would suggest is we did do a parking immobility study. And in that parking study, it does specifically say if we want to increase our parking and how to do it. And so it's really about the town making the decision that they want to invest in those parking enhancements. So that it's there. Um, and again, just with the west side, we have businesses on the west side that need support. If there was residential development on the west side, then they would be supporting those businesses, and that would be walkable. Um. And I'd be hard pressed to ask a town to, um, to spend millions of dollars or the state to spend millions of dollars on overhead crossing when there's no residential development on the other side that's going to be using that, that train if that, if that's the objective of that. So there's got to be some development first to show that there's a need for that. And then over time, then you have your return on investments, then you have a real return on investment where you can say, hey, we've got residential development here. We've got commercial development. Remember, it's just not going to be residential development. It's going to be mixed use. And based on the plans that I've seen for Nine Diamond Ave, it's going to be mostly commercial. So that transit is going to be used. Those businesses are going to be supporting other businesses. And the reality is there's very little redevelopment that could happen on the east side. Maybe there's a lavender rant, right? That could happen. That could be redeveloped on the east side. The real redevelopment opportunity that we have that would support the businesses is on the west side. Those are the businesses that are really struggling. And although Tony looks like he's doing well, sit down with him. He'll tell you that he's struggling. Food costs have gone, all costs have gone up. Restaurants are struggling, retail's struggling, services are struggling. Everything is, everything, they're all struggling. They're all struggling.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure, Kenny, I'm sorry. I've got a little long to do there.
I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, eliminate the west side and go to the reduction area that we've mentioned in the past. I need a second.
I was running inside. A motion is, to what?
To reduce the TOD to the east side only. There was a map drawn by our resident, Eric, and then reference his map.
Map drawn by who?
Eric.
Mark Stumps.
By presentation. Yes.
Can you bring up his presentation so they can look at the map?
The motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right.
Um, is it, you can bring, can we bring the map up before I call for a vote, just so we know? Is that what we're talking about?
It's on the Google Drive.
Eric, is that still on? Is that?
No.
Okay, no, I've, I've got it. I've got it. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, the point of asking for the map to be brought up because when you're making a motion to that effect, you should have either a reference document or, or a reference legal description as to what you're eliminating.
Well. Just to clarify, we're asking you made a motion to ask staff to write the regulation to reduce the TOD to the east side only.
It's not the right.
Showing yeah, based on that map.
There it is.
Yep.
Is that correct?
Yes, and then we would and we would need a whole nother public hearing. All right. So. Well, I'll call, we'll call a vote then. Ken?
Yeah.
Uh, I, I have a comment on that before you call for a vote.
Go ahead, Mr. Legner.
I would be hesitant to make any motions tonight, uh, by changing anything without getting them written up in a, in a legal context where they would be defendable.
Thank you. Uh, just to clarify, we're asking staff to write those. That's the, that's the motion. Am I correct in saying that, Ken?
Yes.
So Ken, your vote?
Yes.
Eric? No.
No.
Fine.
Yes.
I'm a yes.
No. No.
Yes. What's the vote, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, I have four to, four to three.
Motion passes?
Yes, passes. Okay, so.
Can we, can we discuss this a little bit more so I have a clear understanding of what the commission wishes to do?
Yes.
All right, so you referenced documents in regards to made a motion to what was the motion again?
Made a motion to ask staff to write the regulations.
It's not a regulation.
Or to an amendment.
Amendment to?
To reduce the size of the TOD to the east side only of their train tracks based on the map that was shown during Eric Swenson's presentation. I can give you a date if you need that.
TOD, it's the TOD overlay zone.
January 23rd, 2025.
I, I asked this when, when Mr. Swenson, can I say something?
Yes.
Yeah, sure.
Yes.
When Mr. Swenson presented, it, the capacity in which he was presenting to us was what? As a member uh, someone who works for the town or as a, as a resident?
I tried to keep my, my presentation strictly to read, I even noticed that I didn't reach any conclusions beyond just reevaluating. Um, so.
Sorry.
Although I am a resident, I attempted as best that I could to present as Public Works Director for the town.
Yeah, it could be. I added the tracks.
Yes, I did.
That's interesting.
Okay, excuse me, um, Mr. Chairman, I have to
Yeah.
I have to deal with some of the, um, semantics of this.
Sure.
Okay.
True.
All right. So you want to, um, reduce the size of the TOD overlay zone
Mm-hmm.
as, to, as presented on this, um, on the presentation by Eric, correct? Okay, so you made a motion and you made a decision. My concern is, and again, you have to understand, I'm dealing with it from a procedural point of view. What are your reasons for reducing the size of a TOD zone? You're making a formal motion. You're not making any formal consensus or anything like that. I need to know the reasons for doing that. The reason I need to know that is that will be part of the application that the commission will start to, to reduce the TOD zone. Now, during that process of when you want to reduce the zone of that nature, you have to have reasons for the reduction. It's similar to anything else that you do acting as a zoning, under the zoning regs, when you want to amend a zoning reg or change a zone or things of that nature. And the reason for that is that it is an appealable matter to the courts. So very formally, that's what you have to do. Because what you're doing by reducing it, you have to have reasons for doing.
That's, Paul, that's my point for making it, putting it in the proper legal least.
Right. You can't just do it.
Ken, you made a motion. You, you made the motion. You're like, I don't want to put words.
Yeah, no, I'm referencing the map. And that's, that's my reason. Um, I, I would just guess what was now, but like, we want to speak more specific, except because it's more aligned to the wash shed of the train station.
And Mr. Chairman, I think it's inappropriate for a member not to be giving reasons of that nature. He is an ex-officio member.
He's the elected official.
Um. Who's the elected official?
They are.
Go ahead.
Please. Um. Well, I'll, I'll give my reasons for, for yes, and uh, my rest, my reasons rest in the, the lacking of connectivity um, to the, to the, the train station from the, from the west side to the east side. Um, also the concerns on the density being built in downtown Bethel. And the concerns on the reduction of parking, parking.
Also, um, there's no possibility of having, having a cross, crossing on the railroad tracks, which would an at-grade crossing. An at-grade crossing is what the state wouldn't want. They weren't supportive of an over, overhead.
Right, but that's $25 million.
No, we did a, we did.
Janice. Wow.
Sorry. It's a working session.
No, they, they're giving the staff, they're giving staff reasons for the denial. I apologize, but go ahead. I'm sorry, Diane. No possibility of a crossing.
Of a railroad cross, of a crossing there other than having to do, um, overhead. Which seems to me very, um, expensive and not in the best interest of taxpayers. Um. And the walkability is key.
Walkability is key for what?
For where it's
What?
Reducing it to this, because you can't walk. Diamond Ave is far away.
Um, okay.
Well.
Everybody can walk.
No, I mean, well, talking about the side, the sidewalks are not
Wide enough.
They're not even there in some phases. Um. I mean, this was brought up then in the other public.
Aren't we, aren't we, aren't we just kind of guided to consider transit as not just specific to the train? And aren't we, in this case, assuming that we're only talking about the train?
A hundred percent, no.
No?
I mean, yeah, I mean, we did hear what they had to say, but.
In terms, when, when we talk about. In terms, when, when we talk about proximity to, in this area, it's all predicated on the distance away from the train station, right? But I feel like you've got some advice from everybody, that transit is more than that.
Right, and we have to, you know, consider the fact that the buses run or whatever, how many people are driving. They're saying that the, you know, the driving in downtown, this is, is sometimes through traffic, but you know, we're still adding more cars, more traffic now having it over here. But they have to still drive to Carluzy's or drive over to the intersection.
Mr. Chairman, uh, can I just, um, make one suggestion?
Sure.
My suggestion is that, um, I, I, anytime you make, and made your decision as a board, you come to a consensus, and then you request staff to write a resolution, right? Am I correct? I think in this instance, you really, I mean, I, I see a sense of urgency, and you've talked about that sense of urgency during all your discussion this evening. But I feel very strongly that the resolution should be put in writing, and then you as a board vote on it. It is a major change.
Well, we voted, you know, we've been listening for a year about this.
I'm, my, my request is to give us the opportunity to write you a resolution with conditions that we believe would stand out better than just mentioning walkability is the key and the overhead. I understand what you're saying. I did take notes during your discussion, and give us the opportunity, put it in a formal resolution so you can vote on it properly. That's all I ask.
Would you be able to have that done by next Thursday, and have a regular meeting, put it on each other?
Tuesday?
Tuesday, I'm sorry.
What do you think? With the amount of activity that we have on the meeting, I probably could give you a draft, but it would not be complete. It'd be very difficult. I'm, I'm just being honest with you.
No, I understand.
You got two eight thirty Gs and there were public hearings.
So.
I am not procrastinating. You, you came to a consensus, you've asked for something. My concern is to protect you as a board from procedural issues that could arise if an appeal is taken.
Who's going to appeal?
A proper, property owners that are looking at possibly redeveloping a, a large area.
Yeah, Diamond Avenue, it's the exact reason why we don't want four hundred departments down there. That's why we're running.
I know, but Mr. Parsons, you have to understand that the overlay zone has already been applied to that property. That's not rescinded by what you want to do with the overlay zone. It's already done. It doesn't change that. Ask me the, don't, you know, just ask. That's what I'm saying. That's how it is.
It hasn't come before us yet, so.
The site plan has not come before you.
Right.
But the overlay zone has been applied to that property. They went through the process. Yes, that's a good way of phrasing it.
Well, the vote stands.
Does anybody else on the commission have anything?
Oh, yeah, I don't, I don't know if I quite understand which exact properties are involved in the east side, because this map is different than. I know, but this one is in shape. This isn't outlining properties. It's going from the middle of the lot here, it's.
Like, to me, I, I just want to get to that part, like, this map is Mr. Swenson's, he, he gave it, so it's, did we commission Mr. Swenson to draw this map for us? Where's the map coming from? I feel like we're treating it as though it's something that has been.
I mean, is that not included in that? That one, cut the lines, touching the line, is that one included or not?
I could draw a map, right? I mean, but to me, that.
I mean, I think we need a clear direction, and, you know, because you, you, you're taking away right here. Taking away these right here, which, if that's what you're intended to do, but I don't think it's clear where your intention of which lots to include, when you have this shape that doesn't follow outline of lots. I'm suggesting that an exhibit would have to be drawn up that goes through which lots are included and which ones are not.
Well, that goes back to what I was saying.
And that would be part of some resolution.
Formal procedure that. We would reply to that. And then you base it on the map, but you, you guys do what you want to do.
You're taking all of Greenwood Ave. It's just these one, two, three, four, five. There's like ten, maybe ten lots on here.
The, the motion was based on Eric's map, so that, that could be subject to, to, um, interpretation.
Right, and it needs to be, but when are we going to decide which spots it is?
Alright, look, I'm looking at this map. First of all, timeout. Now I'm getting a little aggravated. Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Maps of this nature, and it is something I apologize for being tired.
You're disrespectful. You're disrespectful of the elected commission. It, it's ridiculous. She's an employee of this town. She's out of order. I'm sorry.
I understand. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, when you do, um, a reduction of a zone or an, or, uh, an expansion of a zone, the zone is based on the zoning. This is not the zoning. I just want to clarify that for you. Again, continue to do what you wish, but I just wanted to clarify that for you. Thank you.
Yeah.
Hey, Paul?
Yes.
Fine-tuning is sounds perfectly logical.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Yeah, absolutely.
I agree with you. And like, like I said, it was, it was based on the map. I don't think there's a photocopy of it.
Fine-tuning it to this side of the right rail of that.
Again, we can discuss that when we go to the public, public hearing.
Doesn't she have to put it in the resolution?
Well, yes, but then again, we can change it in the hearing, and then we'll have another work session, do the whole process over again.
Zone changes are based on parcel maps.
Yes. Do you want to make sure you understand? I'm not, yeah, okay. Anything else? From any staff, the commission members, from our guests on the economic development, anyone, anything?
You mentioned the chair.
All in favor?